Called meeting to order any items from the public. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
This president will be approved the agenda if there's no modifications for Thursday, December nineteenth.
Motion been made.
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. I want to back up real quick and say we do have some birthdays here coming up this month. Dan?
Today.
Today?
Today.
Birthday. Ms. Malk, she's a Christmas baby.
Christmas to him.
Thank you.
As well as Jimmy Buffett.
Jimmy?
My grand or my father-in-law and my daughter.
Is that right? We said happy birthday to Mr. Davis's birthday coming up at the end of the month, so.
That'll be a black letter day one. Be a black letter day one.
Everybody have a happy birthday. Consent agenda where purchase order, any questions on the purchase order? Internal budget revision. Mr. Davis, you have some?
Yes, sir. I have four internal budget revision requests for the council's consideration, all from Tim Zaya. Two for Department seven thirty-one Day Report Center and two for Department seven oh five Home Confinement. The first request for Day Report Center, Mr. Zaya is requesting that he be allowed to reduce line three forty-one Supplies and Materials by a thousand dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance is thirty-four thousand twenty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents with thirty-one point nine four percent spent to date. An increased line two fourteen travel by a thousand. That account currently has a deficit balance. So the budget transfer, in fact, all four budget transfers are needed to correct deficit balances. The next request for seven thirty-one Day Report Center, again, Mr. Zaya is requesting that he be allowed to decrease line three forty-one Supplies and Materials by a hundred dollars and increase postage by a hundred dollars to to correct the deficit balance of twenty-one dollars and fifty cents. The third request for Department seven oh five Home Confinement, Mr. Zaya is requesting that he be allowed to reduce line two thirty Contracted Services by a thousand dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance is eighty-five thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy cents with thirty-one point four five percent spent to date. An increased travel line two fourteen by a thousand dollars. That account currently has a deficit balance of two hundred and six dollars and eighty-one cents. And finally, for Department seven oh five, again, requesting that he be allowed to decrease line two thirty Contracted Services by a hundred dollars. An increased line two eighteen postage by a hundred dollars. That account currently has a deficit balance of twenty dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Since we're getting ready to start talking about budget, are these internal budget revisions, are they realizing that they have to, you know, make changes on next year's budget to reflect this?
I have met with almost all your internal departments to talk about the adjustments that are needed. We've already gone through personnel schedules. So yes, sir, they do.
And that's why we have starting budgets and ending budgets.
That goes, but you move and target all the time?
Oh, I know that, but you know, sometimes, you know, oh gee, we missed this by so much, you know, it's up and or down at next.
Well, we use travel for home confinement. Currently, we're paying mileage to the employees for travel. The council authorized purchasing three additional subcompact SUVs for home confinement. We just got notification, where's Tracy at? But they're being shipped right. They're on their way. So we should have those. So that valley, that expense will go away.
Can you transfer to somewhere else?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Those are, you know, the home confinement is a new management that we're dealing with too. So you gotta get a feel for it.
Correct. This is only the end of the second full year that we've had home confinement under the council's umbrella.
Plus, it's got seven added participants now.
Correct.
All right. Moving on to change in status. New hire recommendation received from the Honorable Sheriff Curtis Keller for Luke Watts as a deputy effective December twenty-third, two thousand nineteen with an annual salary of thirty-nine thousand five hundred. New hire recommendation received from Jack Line Facility Director for Todd Whitmore as a Facility Worker One effective January sixth, two thousand twenty with an annual salary of thirty thousand nine thirty. A new hire recommendation received from Brian Ross Engineering Director for Stephen Four, is that right? As a Building Inspector effective January thirteenth, two thousand twenty with an annual salary of fifty-five thousand dollars.
Is Mr. Four certified?
That's what you're gonna ask.
Mr. Four is a certified residential building inspector. He's a residential commercial building inspector. He's a licensed electrical inspector. And he's a certified plans examiner.
Where'd you find all that?
We actually, we had not a lot of applicants, but a pretty good pool of qualified applicants. Come on, Brian, if you could come up.
I think Mr. Four would be the first one in many years has the certifications.
Correct.
Up-to-date certificate?
Up-to-date certification through ICC along with Virginia certifications. It won't transfer over into ICC, but he also had a above and beyond certifications through the state of Virginia. He works, currently works in Stafford County and he is their senior inspector down there right now. And he recently got engaged to a lady in Inwood. And he moved to Inwood and we agreed on this salary even with all his certs. And his comment was love will make you do stupid. So he currently resides in Inwood and.
What's your start?
What's that?
What's your start?
January thirteenth.
January thirteenth.
If the council will recall, you authorized some internal, temporary internal adjustments. August, September timeframe, Mr. Ema, at this salary of fifty-five thousand. This new employee will move from Building Inspector into the vacant Plans Examiner position.
Need to start the semis. Girlfriend?
Excuse me?
His future wife. Send her a card, say thank you.
I will, in fact, my wife and I.
I'll make sure you do stupid things, so just make sure she understands.
No, since he resides in Inwood, my wife and I are getting the fifth fiance and having it going out there. So just to start the ball rolling with that.
But you had four pretty strong.
Yeah, I phone interviewed six and physically interviewed four. All four were strong candidates.
That's good.
They really were. And that indeed really brings in some good applicants that we have, but all four were good. But I also had to look at what they were bringing to the table.
Right.
And what he agreed on salary with what he's bringing to us.
It's good to know that we're, you know, we're starting to pull people from. Union.
Got a great personality.
And we've never been able to do that. Pull anybody from the East.
Is that, is that what he worked in inspections down there or what he worked?
Yeah, Stafford County Government.
Yeah, I mean, did he do inspections? Is that what he did?
Yes, yeah, he did. He does residential, commercial and residential and commercial plan review. He's our senior inspector now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We have minutes in front of us, November twenty-first. I was not present, so need a motion to approve, modify those.
So move. A second.
Motion, got a second. Any discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Councilperson Barnhart was not present for December the fifth. Any changes or corrections on that? If not, then need a motion.
I still approve.
Second.
Motion been made, seconded. Any discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Any count?
Mr. President, you left on Darren Wright.
Right, I didn't see that.
Cause you would. Huh? Okay, cause it's. Here it is.
It's on yet.
So we have, is it Darren?
Darren Rankin.
Darren Rankin for the Prosecutor's Office, going from part-time to full-time. Compensation will be twenty-four thousand effective December nineteenth, two thousand nineteen.
That is. Part four, seven.
Yes, sir.
And the evaluation fund, as you are killing.
All right, so we're gonna make that now part of the consent agenda. Sorry about that mistake. County Council calendars. The offices will be closed Tuesday to Christmas Eve on the twenty-fourth. They'll be closed on twenty-fifth, Christmas Day.
Yeah, it's all day Christmas Eve thanks to government.
Actually, thanks to us.
And the government.
And Thursday on the twenty-sixth, the county council will not be meeting. However, the office will be open because it's on the sixth. And currently on New Year's Eve, the buildings will be closing down at one o'clock. They'll close all day. Which is conditions. We have, currently we still have the Water District at five P M. on the twenty-third. And Mr. Whitaker scheduled to be on W E P M. at nine A M. on Friday the twenty-seventh. Any changes on those? We have a grading bond release for Arcadia Communities LLC Yorkshire Glen, Section One, Phase One. Engineering Department has made that recommendation. We have a grading bond release for Arcadia Communities LLC Yorkshire Glen, Section One, Phase Two. Engineering has made that recommendation. Questions on that? Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some of it.
Motion been made, seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Not all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Good morning, Mr. Hess. Some personal tax exemptions.
Yeah, I had five I had to bring over the last two weeks of the bringing up. First of all, this there. Uh, twenty-one dollars and ninety-six cents.
We have five personal tax exemptions due to Officer.
Make a motion to approve the personal property exemptions due to Officer nine hundred thirty-one dollars and ninety-six cents.
Motion been made, seconded. Any discussion? If not, all favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Looks like you have a consolidation.
Says you do here on the read ahead.
That's Peter Gallagher.
All right, you want us to read it off to you then?
You wanna look at it?
Yeah. Peter Gallagher, Lot One, renovations.
Yeah, I shouldn't put it in my pack this morning. But. Want me to read it off?
Yeah, go ahead.
It's a, it's a consolidation to get one tax bill. This is for Peter Gallagher in the Falling Waters District. They have three parcels, all in map fourteen, parcel twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-four one. And we just put them together, play the save for one tax bill. Thanks, sir.
Mr. President, I'm going to approve the application consolidation of property for Mr. Gallagher.
Second.
A motion been made, seconded. Any discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Board and committee reports, we're gonna hold off on those. Board and commission vacancy, any activity on that? Thank you. I'm trying to move faster.
I'd like to make an appointment. Riley Hamilton to the Senior Services Board for a full three-year term starting January first, two thousand twenty and ended in two thousand, December thirty-first.
Second. What's that, Ms. Malk, though?
Riley Hamilton.
Okay, all right. Motion been made, seconded, I think, Jim.
Yeah.
Seconded that. Any discussion on that?
Is he on the board now?
No.
Oh.
He's a new guy.
He's kind of taken the place of Richard Dennis since Richard is the.
Good old Richard Dennis.
Motion been made, seconded. Any discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. President, I'd like to have an interview with the call set up. That's not a problem. That's not a problem. We don't have any meetings in January, so we're trying to get all this squared over with.
And I'd like to appoint Marty Roberts to the nine-one-one.
Agreed, board.
Agreed, board.
He'll be filling the vacancy of Tommy Puffler to expire.
Second.
August seventeenth. Motion been made, seconded. Any discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Malk, you have.
I would like to, I would like to make a motion to reappoint Ronald Fitzpatrick to the Airport Authority for a full term. We appointed him recently. He's finished filling out an expired, yeah, expired.
Okay.
Second.
Motion for seconded. Any discussion? If not, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carries. All right.
Ms. Morgan, you wanna come on up here? Wanna tell them your name and where you went to school and what are your plans? Activities?
Morgan Schreiber, senior head of my school, City Tent Team, Media Specialist for our basketball team. Every day I'm. Personal or social media. At Liberty University, major in strategic communication.
Really good in all these.
Yes. I think it's great just going to Liberty, Liberty College. So I know where the political correctness will not be a big.
I was gonna get into that, but I figured that'd be.
Okay, raise your right hand. I state your name. I swear in the heart of the whole Constitution and states in West Virginia that I will work hard to fulfill this office of honor. Which I believe.
All right. Next on our agenda is Gary Wine, Seppody County Administrator, bid recommendation, R F P. for broadband wireless. Good morning.
If you will recall when we discussed. You were standing. Oh, that was good. It may be all private. And we began to look for opportunities. We could facilitate. We went out to the. Off cases. Just to fill the waters. Have some close. The face on our side. School partnership. We done that, we had two responses. My family mayor. Both. On your hands. It's all paid reviews. Do what we need to. Discuss. See in the read ahead that. That's. Their solution. Their customers. What I believe. Price. This. Give it your piece of your body. The. Okay, ask. Service looking. So. Um, opportunity to progress. Which is underserved. Which is underserved. Many who are underserved. More than, plus eighty-one, who go out. Difficult. Relationship with me, all we're doing is giving them space on our. Doesn't interfere with that. In our show. You are. In. There is.
How much room do they need?
They probably need, they're called rack units within a networking rack. They probably need. So.
And we, we got that.
Oh, my goodness. Shelter up there is. Very good. Think it's a great idea? Oh, we're here to serve the need of the community. Very much.
Well, how much of the community can they serve with this?
So the technology, we do the same thing for agency. So for instance, Bettington, the railroad track in Bettington, service the same thing.
Is it sightline distance?
It is line of sight. Distance can be up to twenty-five, thirty. We're doing nineteen kilometers to Bettington, the same town. Do it very well. We service probably three.
What's a customer have to, have to do?
It's an antenna. That's what's part of their, part of their solution that they offer. Just say you live out where I live and you can see the mountain. Hundred fifty dollars. I've set it up. That'll stall the antenna. It's like. Me in a situation, power of a drought. Antenna on the house.
You mean a spike antenna or a sound wave?
No, they're directional. So most of them, they can be square around depending on the distance they change in size. So. We have a two-foot antenna paid to. Big. We have. Antastation to size that microphone. Down, which clear across. To do with landmarks. Our house. We do it all the time. So it just depends on the distance how we.
And Jim, the biggest thing is you may not be in line of sight, but they're also already in Morton County, so.
Yeah.
Part of the valley could, could actually get signal from Morton County. Or we could throw signal, or they would be able to throw signal of our tower to hit Sleepy Creek Mountain and bounce it back even. And there might be some residential antennas that go up that will service other people.
So part of the solution for, they're called WISPs. Let's just say you live in a community and you have a freestanding antenna network that you. But you've got cable. Well, they could point to point to that antenna and then put a multi-point. So there's lots of opportunities. I think it's important to focus on the fact that they are only interested in your direction earlier. We only. Use it for delivery to.
And they'll handle all the customer interactions and advertising and all that stuff.
Our only part of this is to give them space. And that agreement would need to come. So I guess today if you approve, you approve the, I think it. They have no, there's no constitution law apparently. Get the tower space.
And if people have problems with the services, not, that's, that's between them and the provider, not us. All we're doing is providing space. Need a motion to, for the bid recommendation on broadband wireless.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation by Gary Wine to approve the broadband wireless and to President.
Second.
Motion.
You need the name of the provider, Morgan.
Please.
Morgan Wireless.
Motion been made, seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries timeline that everybody's asking.
They're, they wanted, they had been on us to move, so I would assume. There's kind of the weather. Probably in the next. I didn't see it up.
So I could, you start telling people early, screen. Thank you.
They can start applying more applications.
All right. Hey, can, can you, Mr. IT guy, can you make sure we have information on those people so we can actually, like, ask us, we can forward it to? Thank you. All right, next on our agenda is Rachel Snably and Susannah Henderson, the Grand Administrator's Progress Report. Good morning, ladies.
Hi, wouldn't you? Yeah. Council. Rachel and I are here to present an update for two thousand nineteen. I'm gonna talk about the accomplishments for this year and then Rachel's gonna talk about. Did you know how? No. So if you go to our account, funding. Um, just a little background, things that Rachel and I look for, remember. Eligibility, it is a. We actually write the application and the amount of time. Partners. And I just wanted to say, you know, this. Everybody, they follow up, everybody's. We're getting done. So I know Rachel and I are writing the research, but we have someone to work with and give them the program. We're not gonna be.
So you have a lot of, we've had a lot of cooperation with them.
Yeah, exactly. And then just to remember that this. So even if we find. Jumping to some figures for this year, so. Along with providing the grants and also making sure public. We're trying to keep. And you need the partners to do that. So again, back. So right now, we currently are overseeing seventeen grants. Of those seventeen, fourteen, over two million dollars. Don't have. That's it. So we did apply for twenty-five.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And then slide five, we just defer a grant for you and follow it up by category. So you. They made one together for the O B L response. Airport Center, drug court grant, right in the pressure group somewhere that we're the only town. To. Like for any of that. Hill Bill. Girls mandate and. Together. So that was.
Susannah and Rachel, was there any grants out there for Brexham Water since we're getting ready to do the building for the Day Report Center? It's amazing how there's money for treatment, but yet no money for Brexham Water to put the treatment team in.
It's like we need money for the programming, but. John, we did, you know. We're gonna send it in.
Only one that I've ever seen from Brexham Water in the past eight years is the brown ground. Dr. Carter's got three million.
Yeah, and that was specifically for private sector. So you wouldn't even help.
Then you just get another one? For addition.
I heard something. So you got that, you got a grant for that?
Yes, I did.
I heard, or I read that he was going after it. I didn't know he got it awarded.
Yeah.
That's super.
Yeah, that was on social media a couple of weeks ago.
There's lots of.
I don't believe anything on social media.
Well, Abraham Lincoln said everything on the internet was true.
They don't have, they don't have internet over in the valley. Remember we just talked about that?
I'm secluded.
The other grants, Rachel really hasn't taken Leon to public see. Those are the two priorities. Now there are two of us able to do all the life grants for you all and working with. From tribe development grant, planning grant. Spreading it out a little bit. And that's all from me and Rachel's gonna talk about ongoing grant funding. We can also come. Opportunity. Putting people together, it might not immediately result in, but.
Well, Apollo, we're going, they got a Warren grant. To do a study of the building, right?
Yes, they've been assigned this. Uh, so.
And then once they get that, then they can apply for a much bigger grant. Through the bill.
Yes. Would like to do business plan. Shane is trying to encourage. Do you think longer? And longer term plans.
There's also a street improvement grant for that area as well, right, that the city has.
And actually, this is our preservation society, has an engagement. Um, that I'm. Building that they received citation.
A long time ago, they had issues with water coming inside. Because the sidewalk is, road is almost the same elevation as a sidewalk. And they got some deterioration on the front of the building. Always talk about bathrooms, elevator. HVAC, yeah.
Yeah, so it'd be great to get that assessment.
A gentleman in arts from Muslin Haskell, a couple of years ago, came in front of us and asked us. Tell us how important the arts is, that maybe.
So have they, have, has the Powell came up with a business name, one of, one of the things that we talked about when they were in here was that, you know, if, if you really want, if you really want help. The board needs to know what your direction is moving forward, and, and so there was a, there was a question posed, when they would come up with that.
Anyway, technical assistance for help. It would be the, the same funding source. So we were going to go have a meeting in January.
You, you sort of talk a little bit before you move on, about your training, seeing contacts that you made down there, people that you met down, down there. Fact that your, your efforts have resulted in them coming up here next month.
Okay, so, one of the grants that I applied for, I didn't get, was often. While it's happening. But it's good to have it evaluated, see where the gaps are, what's better, so I applied for this, um, foundation. One reason or another, I didn't receive it, so I tracked them down, and so. Rachel and I, we went to a training. Went to a meeting with them, and it turns out they have. Just focus on West. They have been invited here by DHHR at the state level, they've been. Why have they come? So, they're going to, they would like to come and earn the late general. So, and they, Rachel and I have to get their program. Call some time, you know, to see the response. Well, it's not money right now, you know, they're doing, they have a two-year program, and they're scoping this year, they're trying to run the state meeting with them. So, you know, we.
Think the DHHR, I've talked to several legislators, they are, they needed help, an organization, their group, to be better responding to needs of the community. So if they do come to Berkeley County, say, then we're working with the DHHR to make them better, so don't pick the DHHR for what we're going, what we're trying to improve on.
So we'll just drop to the gen chat, that's just one thing, I don't like, I don't like to lose. So, that is Rachel. So, turn me down.
We like yours competitive.
I want to know why you turned me down, and what I can do better next.
And as they said, they couldn't understand why they skipped over these, we're the closest region to DC, but yet they completely, they completely leapfrogged over us and went to the other parts of the western region, so they tracked them down.
And Rachel was saying about a couple of other things people also did. Adam, Suzanne mentioned, we. Two, two B. Is here, I think. Fifteen. Library. Only one.
Right, so the, so the two, two million dollars that we have gotten is just basically what has been for the county, not counting all these other fifteen million of, or the grants that have been successfully allowed.
Yeah, that's. Going to.
And you will provide technical assistance, we won't administer the grant, but help them through the process.
Actually. Could be doing our. Home performance. You know, physically, you're.
Well, one of the things, Rachel, Suzanne, is, uh, I was told that there's money set in there for a quick response to. I would just ask, ask that question by James Boy, I mean, here, here a couple of weeks ago, about whether we made any progress with that, it seems like starting to get the buy-in, there's one. Elected official still gets an issue with that, um, but. There's, I, I know Jefferson County has it, I was told that there was money for Jefferson County and Burke County, but you get the law enforcement buying it right. Right, so, but everybody else has bought in. But is the money set in somewhere?
Um.
Can you check into that?
Yeah, I don't know if there's a grant. Berkeley County.
So gentleman, gentleman by the name of Jonathan, that works at Dr. Hart's, actually got him a three billion dollar grant for the building that's now open and running, um, he's the one that found the money was there.
Application, haven't got it. Moving on, I'm going to talk very briefly about our campaign. Should be spreadsheet. There for each quarter. I would say there are thirty grants listed. Say, out of all those. Five of them. The ones that we need to. Either mouse, or either actual mouse. Getting. Um, I've broken it down by the quarter, looking at. Gets to come out. The only quarter that might be a little. A lot of, uh, agreements come out, every one, they all come out.
Quarter?
Yes, and they're all very time intensive, so because there's five that will come out.
I'm sure we'll pay overtime, because you're.
Um, we'll have a breakdown of, uh, the categories, what it's.
Okay, so those, those quarter one and quarter two, through quarter four, those are grants that we've filed for. But we haven't been awarded, but we're hoping.
But these are, these are grants that we have, that are coming out in twenty twenty, so in quarter one, all those grants are. These are the greatest. Quarter two. Um, and that's just based on previous. Obviously not. So should be applying. We want the max award for every grant, or three nine.
And make sure Tracy has plenty of coffee and breakfast, okay?
So.
Always exciting to see the work that you're always getting. Very rewarding.
I'm glad they have windows in their office, but I don't think they take much time looking at it. Thank you.
It's kind of like a front porch on a house, I don't think you can put your front porch no more than I did, man.
Fair to look at. Too much to do though.
It's important to point out that Rachel and Suzanne, while these are the grants that they're applying for, certainly. Takes a lot of expertise, and they are both excellent and right. Challenge here for that one to begin the grants, many times, is the administration of the grant. And making sure that everything reconciles. Reports that they're turning in reconciles with the body of the grant. Which we find particularly with the newer brand, that sometimes, as we get into a new project, we need less money here, but more money here. And it's not a matter of just saying, okay, we're just going to move the money, they actually have to go back to. Branding authority and say, we need less money in supplies and more money in salaries, or less money in salaries and more money in supplies, and they actually have to get the authority to do that.
Sometimes they get it, sometimes you don't.
And, and, and I know that they're constantly. You know, let's move money here, and, and they do a very, very good job at having, you know, they've been able to establish and maintain. Contacts over the years, so. It's a lot more, a lot, a lot more than. We understand.
I think you just said it's a nice way to let them ladies know.
Well, that has never been wired, served, but yes.
Thank you for that, ladies.
You, you, and, and I'm sure, and I'm sure the employees that are in all of these positions that are grant funded are much appreciative of what you ladies do as well.
Those employees are wonderful.
Yeah.
I've met a couple of them this morning at the recovery resource center. Faces. Very happy. All right, any questions for Rachel or Suzanne? Again. One thing that I asked when I first got here eight years ago was, how much money do we get in grants? Have full county, right? Um, there's not a full county. Three hundred thousand dollars. Take us in eight years. Three hundred. Six million. Sometimes more than that, so, and hopefully looking forward to record how. Ten million or slightly under. Uh, for next year, so. Private business, we'll, we'll take that investment. Greater returns, great, thank you all, Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
All right, um. Anybody need to break, we're on a tight schedule, trying to get out of here, just get to the train station, so, all right, Mr. Davis, uh, state budget revision?
Yes, sir, just a, a very small state budget revision number six to close out the calendar year, um, over the past month, we've, uh, received twenty seven ACH and checks. Uh, totaling ninety two thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars, just a couple of things of note, um, our IT department continues to provide. Um, a wide range of services to many of the outside agencies, um, the water district, the sewer district, the ambulance authority, the list, you can see the list, uh, there.
City Martburg.
City Martburg, library, senior services, uh, EPTA, um, those, uh, services generated twenty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars. Uh, and that's primarily just supplies and material, um. We also received, um, we had a number of hazmat ins- incidents that have occurred over the past twelve to eighteen months, uh, we've really focused on trying to. Um, collect, uh, some of the, the billing, um, that we've sent out over the past year or so, and we're starting to see some of those payments, uh, come in. Mr. Bentley has been involved in, in sending some correspondence, uh, reminding them that West Virginia state law requires that they do reimburse us for hazmat response, responses, so. Um, we did receive some of that remittance totaling slightly more than two thousand dollars, which we will be putting back into, uh, supplies and materials for emergency services.
Do we, on the hazmat reimbursement, I know there's sometimes, that can get pretty expensive, do you take them to court to get their money?
We, the last letter I wrote, I think you gave, uh, deadline, I think it's the end of this month, to respond to us with. Money, it was only. Thousand dollars. We did say to them. If you don't respond with a check. We will, obviously, in certain, for, for accounting, requires you to hire a lawyer, you can't just do it yourself.
So is it mostly this non-payment from the carrier, or non-payment from their insurance?
This is the carrier, this is the insurance carrier that we're, we're having a problem with right now, and in addition to that, if they don't pay, state law requires, if they don't pay within thirty, within ninety days. That the amount is tripled, I've told them what the new amount is, just under nine thousand dollars. And then you'll go to court to enforce it.
Yeah, and ask for attorney.
Hold that payee, it's now remunerated.
And then finally, we received two claims payments from the risk pool totaling four thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars, um, for repairs to, uh, an older, um, two thousand and ten Ford Expedition. Um, and also repairs to one of the Ford police interceptors, uh, two thousand and eighteen Ford police interceptors that we just purchased not long ago, so. Um, as I said, total amount of this state budget revision is fairly small, uh, ninety-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Need a motion to approve?
Same move.
Second.
Much to be made, exact, and any discussion? If not, all favor, say aye, anyone? Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Just take, just a quick break, so we're going to let Morgan go before we go to executive session, but we're going to take a photo, and I'll come right back, Chad, you. Need off. Back in Penny.
And Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Ready Penny? All right. Need a motion to go to executive sessions for legal matters.
Same move.
Motion been made, seconded, uh, any discussion? If not all, favor say aye.
Right.
Anyone opposed? The motion carried. We are in the executive session.